I'd like to call the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at six thirty. Mr. Pinio, do you have any need for non-public?
We do RSA ninety-one A three, Roman numeral two, lowercase m, consideration of non-public minutes.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, the minutes of December sixth, December fourth, and I'd like to start with noting that we need under, at the meeting should be Attorney Nathan Finacy, and that needs to be on page one, and then somewheres, starting on page five, Finacy became Hennessy, and it became Mister. So he go, you see his name, talk, and then you say, and then it changed to Mister Hennessy confirms this. And I think that should all be Attorney Hennessy. And if I'm correct on that, that's on the, after the first motion, Mr. Pinio is speaking. Sixth line down, it says which will go to the deliberative session on February fourth, two thousand and twenty-six, which must pass by a two-thirds majority, and I'd like to add it in there in March, two thousand and twenty-five.
I don't remember my two.
So it's clear that that's what happens in March.
Three fifths or two thirds?
Three fifths.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any corrections?
Yeah, page nine, the second reference to Duches, it says, "Ask of the owner of the seventy-five, ask of the, ask of the owner of the back seventy-five acres is the winer who developed the Chipmunks Hollow subdivision." So it should say, "Ask if the owner of the back seventy-five acres is the owner who developed the Chipmunk Hollow subdivision."
It was close.
Okay.
I guess Chipmunks Hollow, they're winers, I guess. They like wine.
Anybody else have any other corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as amended?
Move to accept as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Paul, second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the bulk vote. The December sixth manifest had four million three hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirty-four cents. School and counties in that. December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. We have current use application and property tax credit exemption. Does anybody have any issues with any of these? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
A move to approve the bulk vote items A through C.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brad, second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, moving right along tonight. Under new business, pop well and revenue report, park and recreation director.
C, C.
Hi, I'm C.
Is it?
Senator, we have.
It's turned on.
There you go.
Can, yeah.
Got it.
So the report you have has ice utilization. There were one hundred and thirty-six hours of ice used for the month of November. This brings us to six seventy hours used to date. This is eighty-two percent of the ice compared in the budget. This is just for contracted ice, so it's for the schools, any private rentals, but basically it's for the school usage. It doesn't count the town portion. Stick and public skate, to utilize more ice time, we've added stick and public skate, where we had openings where we didn't have it being utilized. So as of twelve, eleven, twenty-four, we've collected thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-one in that fund, which is stick practice, public skate, and skate rentals. And then for advertising, for dashboards and banners, we have received thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars from twelve, eleven, twenty, twenty-four. I based this on, I know there was some discrepancies last time between the two fifty and the two forty, so for all intents purposes, I kept it at the two thirty, which is the non-prime rate, which is ninety percent of our ice is rented at that rate for this year. So we, I kept it at that just to show that it's at two thirty. Some of it is billed at two fifty, but it's minimal compared to the most two thirty.
Okay, board members, any questions or concerns?
Question?
Yep.
So you're in the process of, thank you for this, by the way, you're in the process of trying to figure out what the new prices are. What's your ETA on having that available?
We, I think then we're going to be going on the January eighth, I believe.
If it's teed up, we'll be the eighth.
Yeah.
So we would, we would review them, or you would put them into place?
Review them and have the vote on them, if you're prepared.
But it's for the next ice season.
So it would be any more new contracts, but the contracts we certainly have, that would stay true, but any new contracts we have would go into play for that. And with that, it, we're changing the prime and non-prime times as well.
And what it does is by doing it at this point, it allows all the organizations to adjust. Yep, and make arrangements for the following ice season.
Yes, I actually did just give them a email to let them know that we were in discussions about it, so they could prepare, because some of them are in their budgeting process right now.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Okay, you might need a chair. I have, I have a horrible question to ask. How hard would it be to have a log users we have on each different ice slot that we use for the public, stick, public, skate, and stick and puck? I know that it could be a huge lift. Once a spreadsheet would be built, it might be easy to just hit four, three, eight, and then it all totals and tallies. Just a thought. If you think we can get there sometime, I would, I would love to see that.
So, so I do know that when we do the daily stick and skate, when they are paying, a paying customer, we do have a tally for that deposit per se. If they're using a punch card that they have previously purchased, we are punching a card, so we're not really keeping track of that. I mean, I guess we could keep track of that.
It wouldn't be a permanent thing. If, if we could do it for like a season?
So why, why are we doing that? What do you want to know?
I just, I would like to know, every hour of ice costs us X dollars, and I would like to see which hours of ice are the ones that are most popular with the public, and which ones we might be able to utilize in a different way better.
So I will say that if we have a paying user, we typically try to sell that ice first. With some of those public skates, I will say that during the week, Monday through Friday, you're not getting a lot of usage, but we're already there, so if we throw it in there, it's no extra cost, because we're already there. Where you see the biggest, I would say, revenues from that would be any of those vacation weeks and any of those weekend skates. We just had our skate with Santa, and we had at least a few hundred people there, so that's where you're going to see those bigger ones. We have last night Wolf Row, last year we had a hundred and seventy-five people come to that. I think it's hard during the week, because most people are working, but we try to plug them in after school if we can, when we have that early season ice, before we get all those hockey teams on there.
I mean, our, our new director, Mr. Paul, you think he could do this?
Possibly. I mean, it is, some of it will be easy numbers, some of it is a little tedious, it will be harder to do, but if you want us to track it, we can definitely do that for you.
Okay.
Paul?
So I think what, what's being asked is are we covering our fixed costs for every hour of ice time we, we put out there? That's really the question.
Okay.
And, you know, that, you know, if you have a, if you have a sheet of ice, and the two people skating around, and they've paid fully, you're not covering your fixed costs. That's his question.
Okay.
The, the second question is, is that a task that we want to do? And I think, you know, I'd, I'd let you and Jim marinate on that, in my opinion, and then come back with and say, too hard, can't do, we can do it, not a good idea. It's one of the three.
Okay.
All right. But, I mean, he's asking the right question. No disrespect to the "he" comment. Brian's asking the right question. Do we cover costs with whatever programs we're putting out, and if they're not working out the way we want them to, either change the time or change the program?
Well, we all know that we have times when nobody's on the ice, because nobody's going to rent it at that time of the day, and so we have to carry those costs anyhow. I think also, as I recall, I went in there, there's a bunch of men that come in.
Oh, yeah, our regular, so it's typically our Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we have an open stick and puck, and we have a regular crew, at least twenty to thirty guys who come regularly to play hockey.
Yep. So, I mean, we do have some, but that, it has to fit into people's schedules and stuff.
And I will say, the month of January, early February, we're pretty busy with school skate. Some of them come during the public skate time, but some of them rent ice, so.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? All righty, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is setting the tax rate. Jim, you're going to take us through this?
I'm going to try. So the Budget Committee asked me, maybe a month or so back, to go through and give a quick overview of how the tax rate is set. So I did that, and I was asked to bring that forward to the Board of Selectmen. What I want to say about this presentation is I'm going to try to make it very quick. This is a lot of information that I've stolen from DRA and from our own historical documents. So, you know, right now, we're in the process of working through the proposed budget to get to a warrant to come forward in front of the voters, to secure appropriations. Once we know that that's approved, we have an idea of what the expenses for the town are going to be for the year. If you recall, in the September timeframe, you made some adjustments to the revised revenues. Once we have those revised revenues in place, and you, as a Board of Selectmen, have signed off on them, we go ahead and we set the tax rate in conjunction with DRA. The other carve out to that is, you know, when you look in at the revenues, that gives you as well the opportunity to make the determination if you want to use any of the fund balance to pay down the tax rate, and that's where that calculation is factored in. So this is a kind of a roadmap from New Hampshire DRA as to how the process works, from warrant to various documents, to setting the budget once approved, to the expenses, and as well setting the revenues. So with that said, I took the, this form here from New Hampshire DRA, and I plugged in our numbers. So our numbers for two thousand and twenty-four, we had gross appropriations in the amount of thirty-six million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. When we finalized our revenues, our revenues came in at nineteen million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Then we have to program an overlay. The overlay is a amount that we believe that could be for abatements for the tax, for the, from the assessing office. That number can't exceed five percent of the taxation, tax bills received. Then we have to program the Veterans Tax Credit, so that means we have a net effort of sixteen million, six hundred and sixty thousand, seven, one hundred and seventeen dollars. That's what we have to formulate to set the tax rate. So we take that number, and we divide that out, and that's how we get to the rate per thousand of assessed valuation of six dollars and seventy-three cents. As we move through this, yeah?
Jim, we have no sound going out over the air.
She could be wrong. There was a, there was a citizen, go-to meeting. Yeah. They could be wrong, but there was a citizen who let us know that.
Okay, so we're unsure if go-to meeting is actually broadcasting audio or not. If you are.
Jim, it says, I got a text, and it's on YouTube. They're hearing it on YouTube, so it may be go-to meeting.
Yep, I think we'll continue on.
Okay.
So on the webpage, I pulled this off the Tax Collector's webpage, this is the breakdown of the tax rate that you see in your tax bill. So of the complete tax bill of fifteen dollars and ninety cents per thousand, six dollars and seventy-three cents of that is municipal, which was supported by that slide that I just showed you. Local school, five dollars and eighty-two cents, state school, one dollar and ninety-five cents, county, one dollar and forty cents, and that gets you to the fifteen ninety tax rate. And then there's an additional seven cents for those who are living in the Lower Beach Pond Village District. So how do we work through this? To give you an idea, this is the two thousand and twenty-three estimated tax rate impact when we were at the deliberative session. So we took, we, we programmed in all of the costs for the warrant articles, and we tabulate that out based on what we anticipate going forward. And for that two thousand and twenty-three deliberative session, we estimated the tax rate to be six dollars and six cents per thousand for the town. The actual tax rate when we set it in two thousand and twenty-three for the town was six dollars and two cents. So we, we came in on line with where we thought we'd be pretty close. As we move forward into the two thousand and twenty-four budget season, we had a series of warrant articles. If all of these warrant articles had passed, we would estimate, we, we had estimated the tax rate to be seven dollars and thirty cents per thousand. However, as we're all aware, we ended up having a default budget. We ended up not having a Parks and Rec tractor pass, and we ended up not having a police vehicle pass, and on the floor at the deliberative session, the town roads were increased by two hundred thousand dollars. So when we were all said and done, our actual tax rate for this year was six dollars and seventy-three cents compared to the estimated amount of seven dollars and thirty cents, mainly because of the defeated articles and the increase in the road warrant articles, and that's how we get there. So that's a quick summary of how the tax rate is set. There's a lot of moving pieces to make this take place. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Jim. That's very helpful. I think people, hopefully, will watch that and get a better idea. I think the fact is that we give them the operating budget, and that we do give them the tax impact of each of the warrant articles. Does any other board members have any comments they want to make? Okay, next item on the agenda is draft warrant article for Route twenty-eight. I, in the packet are three different ways in which we could write a warrant article, and Brian tonight handed out his version. At this point, I think the board needs to decide how many options we are going to put out on warrant articles. We have for Pickering Corner, or for Route twenty-eight, and one oh nine come together. There are four different options up there, and there are three options for McManus Road. So let's see if we can come to any consensus on how many we think we should put on the warrant. Ryan?
So my question is for Jim. Jim, I'm doing some research on the computer. I found that you can have a multiple choice, if I'm correct, a multiple choice warrant article. But I think part of this discussion, when I see one that does have three choices, we should have something from either DRA or our Town Council that says emphatically that we can use a multiple choice warrant article, because that's one of the options that is here before.
I just wrote, put that third option in, because I didn't want to make the decision that we were only going to do two, so I gave you an option where you have more than two. I personally think that we should narrow it to two. As a board, I think we have some responsibility to make some decisions, and I think the particularly Pickering Corner one, if you do enhance striping or the traffic light, you lose eleven parking spaces, and I think that, to me, is why you eliminate those two and come up with only two. And I don't know where other people feel. Paul?
Didn't we, and I ask this because I'm feeble, didn't we go through a, a kind of a ranking ourselves and kind of stack rank? So in the example of Pickering Corner, it came down to slip lane and roundabout, and then on, on the McManus, when we whittled those options down, I don't think roundabout made the cut.
No, I, you're, you're true, you're correct, but I, that's why I stuck with the ones I did. But what I have from our vote was the mini build, there were two preferred, one okay, two poor. For compact roundabout, there was one preferred, two okay, two poor. For enhanced striping, nobody preferred it. And with the traffic light, no one preferred it. Advanced, striping, two were okay, three thought it was poor. Traffic light, all five of us thought it was poor.
So given that, given that we went through that exercise, I, I agree with you, in fact, I, I agree with you. Too many, too many options leads to, I think, confusion, and I did get some pushback from people saying that. But I, I think we'd want to get it down to two, and then let folks give us some advice.
Brad, how do you feel?
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, offering them the two choices that we've narrowed it down to would be the way to go. I think if we put too much out there, it adds to confusion. Looking at how these are laid out and stuff, you know, if we could actually do a, similar to what you do for an election thing there, for like, say, for Pickering Corner, circle one for a roundabout, or circle the one for the mini build, restore the intersection. So we have one question there with the two choices in it for that, and you do the same up at McManus Road. I don't know if that was the intent of what you, how you had yours written here.
And at the bottom, I was giving that, and I think you, we'd have to add circle one. I was kind of playing around with that other model down below.
Yeah, yeah.
Because these are, the reason I picked these models is because these are the ones different people had said they would like, so there's that. But I think the wording you have, circle one, would be, be what we would need. Dave?
So what you're saying is that we, on this particular one here, do we have compact roundabout or min, minimum build and restore existing intersection? Those are the two, and take out the enhanced striping, because it's, again, taking out parking spaces, and I'm certainly not in favor of that. And the other one would be the one under it on McManus Road, compact roundabout or minimum build and restore the existing. Correct?
The two, yeah, or in any of the other wording, but we're all in agreement, we want to come down to two options.
I'm in agreement.
Okay.
On Pickering Corner, to have one and two?
A and B.
Hmm?
A or B, your A, B.
Yeah, or one or two, however you want to. The first two, A and B, and then the second, McManus Road, A and B.
Okay. Ryan, you said you wanted to say something?
Yeah. So I'm okay with two choices. I, I feel like we are maybe disenfranchising some voters that don't like either of those choices, but you can't, we can't make everybody happy, I guess. I think that the idea of the wording of minimum build, I think that needs to be changed, because that's going to think that the roadway itself is not going to be built in the same way as a compact roundabout. It's, that's, that's very confusing. A lot of people have said to me, oh, minimum build means that they're just putting tire down and you're done. And so I think we need, that's why in my suggestion, it was the roadway from Pleasant Valley Road to Pickering Corner, Brewster Field will be constructed identically regardless of how the intersections are built. So I think we should have a preface of that sentence, and then we can go, is your first choice at the intersection A or B? Because, and I don't mind breaking it into four and just saying yes or no, yes or no, yes or no, for the four individuals, if it's clear. yes or no, for the four individuals, if it's clearer. I don't mind paring my sentencing down to make it shorter if it's clearer. But I, I do like Linda's longer ones in the middle that do give an explanation of what is happening in the situation. If you just say, you want a roundabout or do you want to have a mini build, they don't know if they're losing parking spots, they don't know that trees are coming down for one or the other. And I know there were lots of meetings, but there are a lot of people that will still not understand when they go to vote what they're voting for, and they should know what they're voting for.
And that's why I put in my first sentence, the New Hampshire DOT Route 28 project, two nine six one five, in case somebody who picks up one wants to go look at it, and that just provides more information. I guess I'm with Brian. I, I would like to put a little bit of wording above that one sentence because I think there are a lot of people who come into the voting and are kind of saying, okay, what's this one now? And that gives them a little bit more wording.
I, I agree with that completely. The only, only comment about the minimum bill is let's make sure whatever is said on the DOT website corresponds directly to what is said here, so we don't get.
And it's minimum bill.
Yeah, it is minimum bill. So we're going to have to, we just got to say, you know, before you do anything, go to the DOT website because we don't want to confuse people and say, I can't even find on the DOT website what you're referencing. That would be my, you know, my only point on that.
So we could, in like my second one, it says, for the third sentence down, it says, Route 28 and Route 109, Pickering Corner, being constructed in its current configuration. And then you could put in parentheses, mini build. Or you could write mini build and then put in parentheses, being constructed in its current configuration. Just so that they understand that those two things are the same thing.
I don't think it's totally in the same configuration because we're going to bring the gas stations and curb them, and they're going to come out further. So we can't say in, in, you know, but we can play around with the wording to try to do that. But we're all in agreement, we're going to do two. How about Brian and I sit down with these two, do it with A and B, and see if we can put some wording together that puts that information, take some of his, take some of mine. So does that work for you, Brian?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Yeah, and I want to be, we got to be careful about things too, like, are we 100% certain that two parking spots will be lost? Are we 100% certain that curbing will cause a problem or may cause a problem?
No, I'm just saying curbing's going to be added. You're saying in the same configuration, there's no curbing in some of that area, and that's going to be pushed out, as they told us that.
Yeah.
I think on Brian's questions, we're going to have to depend on the configuration that was provided to us as the, as the source document. Anything other than that, we don't want to do, I wouldn't want to do that. DOT has given us what the impact of these decisions would be, and we should follow that. Okay.
And we can send them through Steve, and you can check to make sure we're being accurate. How about that?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? All right.
A six set of eyes.
Six set of eyes. Okay. D, warrant article adjusting the elderly exemption amount.
Yeah, so you have a memo in your packet. You have a warrant article in your packet that was just handed to you. We're trying to get it up on the screen. Something's occurred, and we don't have a PowerPoint at this point. But this is looking to increase the elderly tax exemption for those between 65 to 75 to 100,000 per person, 75 to 80 up to 150,000, and for a person 80 years and older, 200,000. To qualify for the New Hampshire, you have to be a New Hampshire resident for three consecutive years. And you must have an income for single person of 35,300 or a combined income less than 47,100 and own assets less than $100,000. This came to us recommended by the assessing office, took their recommendations as outlined in the memo, and programmed them into the warrant article.
So this warrant article is doing two things. It's increasing the amount that's going to be subtracted from their assessed value, which is the 100, 200. And we're also increasing the amount of income they can have in the single and in the married.
Correct. And those changes, now that it's up on the board, the changes are reflected in the yellow highlights.
And so what is, we are going from 30, sorry, do it. I think it's from 30,000 to 35,000.
Thirty-seven, I thought it's.
The one I got, no, the one I have here that I took off one of our, our forms, said that single was 30 and married was 40.
Forty.
And so we're going to 35, 35,300 and to 47,100. Those are the changes.
So I have a question. Jim, how much of this is, are we following the state RSA on this? Because I know the state RSA does set guidelines for these numbers. And I'm wondering if our assessor is using those numbers or are we using numbers below or above that threshold, or do we know?
I can ask the assessor for clarification if they're following state RSA or if they came up with this a different method. I think they probably blended the two when you read the memo, but I, I can get clarification for you as to what the maximums are.
Because I happened to talk to a former state rep who put a bill forward asking for these numbers to be increased based on a cost of living increase every year. And so the state has done some things to adjust that number. I just want to make sure that we're in the right place. If the state is allowing higher numbers, then that would give us the option to even have the combined incomes be a little bit more. I did a little bit of a dive in, and the maximum social security that a married couple can get is 116,952. For a single individual, it's half of that, it's 58,476. So if we're doing a married couple at 47,000 compared to the 116, that's significantly lower than if you look at the 35,3 compared to the 58. It's, the percentage is way off. It means that the married couple actually has, you know, so it's just something that I would want to make sure that we were being fair and equitable to all.
If you would forward me your question, I will have the assessor provide a response.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that we're going to put this one on hold and that we will need to vote on that December 30th? Is that when we're going to vote again?
Yeah, we will try to, yep. If not, we can do it the 8th, because if, if everything goes well, January 8th will be the bond hearings.
Okay. So we'll either do it on the December 30th or January 8th?
Correct.
Okay. All righty. So then we move right into the proposed warrant articles.
So your next article is the library parking lot. You did discuss this. Allison had an event that took place at the library, so she was not able to be at the meeting when we were discussing this previously. She's here this evening. If you have any questions specifically, she should be able to answer them. I did also forward you the estimate from Horsley and Witten based on engineering and estimated construction costs, which I think totaled 59,100, so we made it 160,000.
So I want to speak to it before we get going. I took the non-capital water reserve, capital reserve, non-capital water reserve, and I took out that 50,000 because I feel this Libby parking lot is a project that will address water quality. So it seemed to make more sense to me to put the money where we can upgrade the, take out the phosphorus and upgrade the quality of the water going into Crescent Lake than putting 50,000 in a savings account for a future project. I think it also addresses a drainage issue there. I think the library trustees have worked hard to try to get this plan together. They paid for the plan that is designed here. The general fund did not, it was out of the library fund. So that's my analysis. I'd like to see us move this forward because it is a, a warrant article adjusts water quality, and we've all had a lot of cyanobacteria, and this is one of the steps to start trying to cut down the nutrients.
So Linda, I have a question.
Yep.
Has there been any studies by Wolfboro Waters as to whether or not water from the library parking lot is getting into?
Yes, because it goes into our drainage system, and our drainage system eventually goes into Crescent Lake.
So again, is the one in the library, do we know that it is delivering phosphorus and contaminants to our drainage system?
Well, it doesn't go through this process of a retention basin, which will take the phosphorus out. So it has to be going in. When we did the public safety, Wolfboro Waters has looked at both of them. They looked at the public safety building, they had a big retention basin and processing in the back, and we made sure that in the front, there was an infiltration basin to catch all of it going off that lot. This, to me, seems like it's the same step, is to keep the phosphorus from getting off-site and into our drainage system that ends up down in Crescent Lake. In fact, the Route 28 project is looking at taking some of those, that drainage, and I think put it in a retention basin behind the hospital.
When they do the 28 project, will there be an issue where now the, and we should speak on this for the public safety building too, will there be an issue with those systems that we put in place that they're not going to be operating or they will be operating correctly when the rebuild happens?
They're still going into the same pipe. It's just where the water from the pipe of the road is going to go. Not going to change in the piping on either the lots. Any other board members? Dave?
So it sounds like this plan is to correct the drainage issues. Am I correct?
The majority of the plan is yes, to deal with that. It also deals with raising a section to get handicap accessibility at the main door.
It's a lot of money to correct the problem that shouldn't have happened to begin with. So if the issue is the drainage, we don't have any real breakout as far as the drainage fixing compared to totally rebuilding this parking lot. I mean, it just, it looks like it's all within the front door and the drainage down the islands, but there's really no breakout that I can see as far as numbers.
Did you, you didn't print the, I'll give you the printout.
I have that.
This number sheet? Okay, you have that number sheet, okay?
But it looks to me like even on this number sheet, the majority of the work is in the island, in the drainage.
Well, that island is that retention basin where they put the walkways down that stops it from working. That's exactly where the problem is. That whole area is not working properly.
Well, it's a lot of money to, in my opinion, to correct the drainage issue that should have been, somebody should have caught it when it was built.
Yeah, going back to the discussions we had the other day when we were meeting, going over warrant articles, I think there's something that needs to get addressed at some point here, but I was also looking at the amount that we have in front of us here now. And I was of the thought process that, no, we've been, we have been living with this for about three, four, or five years, whatever the timeframe is, that in order to try and draw a number down, I didn't, I don't have a problem bumping it one, one more year. So I was under the understanding that some changes were made to get the water that was laying in the, in the entrance road area there into the drainage system. It's still got some issues in the system itself there, but it is getting off the pavement now anyway, from what I understand. So I did have a problem bumping this out one more year to, to try and maintain or, you know, lower our, our cash fund that we're spending out on these capital projects here. So, and I'm kind of still leaning in that direction right now.
Brian?
I agree with Brad, and the library is hooked up to a sewer system, so they don't have a leach field there, so that kind of helps the situation. There is runoff that potentially could have contaminants in it, but as Brad said, it's been addressed a little bit to try and mitigate that. And I'm concerned about the handicap entrance just as much, but it looks like we have to do those in conjunction.
I, I think it does. It's a plan. They spent money for a plan. You just don't take a piece of a plan, I don't believe, and do it. I think the whole issue, and why doesn't Allison come on up and?
Yes, Horsley Witten actually put together the plan, and it did include the bump up. So it's all one big fix, to say the least. It's, we've been trying to piece it together, and I think it's been throwing good money on too bad. So we're trying to fix an ongoing problem. I have not seen, excuse me.
There you go.
I have not seen a flood that, at the beginning of, I think, the build out had happened, but there's actually, we see a drainage issue after a discharge. So the discharge is an issue.
I'll make one other comment, and Brad kicking it down another year. And I have been thinking about what I do with the public works vehicle. And then I started to look at what is going to be on our plate in 2026, which can even be higher than where we are today. So I think we're really kicking stuff down when we get to the point where our ambulance service will be making the full amount it can, is going to be 2028. And so I started to rethink what I was and was not going to do when I sat down today and started calculating what happens if we keep on kicking these things down the road. We don't have any better year next year. And it made me start to say, okay, what am I going to do and support? Because I had one number in mind, I was thinking, oh, maybe 3 million. Well, now I'm up to 3.3 because it's not any better next year. And maybe 2027 will be better, but the real time when we get out from under the ambulance is 2028. And I reread the MRI report, trying to balance out what I was doing in 2025, what that would do to 2026. And as, you know, we cannot not fund all our things every year for the next couple of years. So that's why I, I feel strongly that we should get this done. Brian?
So the public works vehicles are part of the equation. We talked about those the other day. But we have Libyan Library.
But we have Libyan library and we have two scenarios. We have a library that is functional. It has a drainage issue. We have a Libyan museum that a wall is in desperate need of repair and is bad enough so that we've been instructed that we need to stay out of the building. So if we're going to put a burden on our budget this year, do we do it on something that can sustain another year as is compared to something that might not be able to sustain another year as is?
Yes, it can sustain another year, but we've got a real water quality problem with cyanobacteria and we can also kick that down the line. But at some point, that's really going to come back to bite us in terms of assessed values and stuff. It's a hard decision. There's no question about it and trying to, but I think we've got to look at not just kicking it one year. We're going to be kicking it down multiple years.
There you go with the multiple years.
Yeah, it's not going to go. I can't see us getting out from underneath this until maybe, maybe 2027, but really what MRI was saying, 2028. Paul?
This is the contrarian view. This is a self-inflicted wound. We did this to ourselves. And Jim Capable, rather than going back and trying to figure out who to blame, Jim said, you know, the issue is drainage and it is. I vividly remember during this project before you joined us, someone actually showing us a handful of sawdust, plastic sawdust coming out of an outflow pipe down near the lake. I think I remember, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't there a piece of work done by the team, Rich Massey, I think was involved showing that we had nutrient loading or was that over by the hospital? Was there, wasn't there a piece?
There's definitely nutrient loading. You get it with the water testing each year. You can see where those are.
I got all of that. I got pictures of drainage running uphill. That doesn't make sense. We've got a whole bunch of stuff around this. And what I don't understand, and I'm poking at Jim for this, we're going to have to find money for an enterprise fund that just went over its budget and is heading towards probably a, I'm making it up, but it's close, 130 to 160 overrun in its budget. We're going to find money for that. Why can't we find money in our own internal town to fund this and not ask the voter to pay again for a really kick-ass water project that we said that we were going to do and we didn't? So do I think it's necessary? Yes. Am I, I shouldn't say objecting, do I have a real problem about asking the voter one more time? We promise we're not going to do it. I think we need to find that out of our own hide. And I have not seen anybody say to me, we can do it with an enterprise fund, take money out of the kitty, but we can't do it over here. And so I see an incongruity. And so until I'm there, I just can't, I'd prefer we not do it and find another mechanism to raise $160,000.
Okay, I need us to move on. We'll be here all night again. Do I have a motion of any kind?
I would just throw maybe one other option to consider here because we seem to have a split on how we're all thinking here of possibly doing Warren article for half of that for 80,000, come back next year with the other 80,000 and then it's funded and we're not hitting the tax rate so hard on one year versus, or the other year, it gets split up between the two years. I just throw that out for a comment. I don't want to drag it out longer, but it's, you know.
Is Brad suggesting we set up like a?
Capital reserve.
A kitty, okay.
Capital reserve.
I didn't hear that, so.
He just, you want to move it over to a capital reserve? Well, let's first take care of whether we want to move this to the warrant or not. And if I sense what we're hearing, we're not going to move it to the warrant, whether we're split or not, it doesn't make much difference. Nobody's going to see it. It's not like when we take a vote and it's going to be on it. And then if we wanted to make a motion for a capital reserve, that's a second piece. So do I have anybody who wants to make a recommendation?
I recommend we, what's the right language, Linda, not move this to the warrant?
You want to vote not to recommend.
That's right. Vote not to recommend.
Not to recommend.
On the library drainage of $160,000.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Paul, second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four to one. Alrighty, now Brad, do you want to make a motion about a capital reserve or do you want to wait until later and see where we are?
We'll wait till later to see where we are.
Okay.
Come back to that.
Alrighty.
Okay, so your next Warren article is the library solar. Numbers have been updated. Project total, 173,381. We need to raise 52,014. There's a very good chance that we will receive this money through a rebate. However, that rebate takes 12 to 18 months to receive, so we have to raise that amount of money. And they have raised in grants, donations and rebates, 121,367 for this project.
Okay, board members, any comments or questions or concerns about this? This could cost the taxpayer nothing. It could cost them 52.
That's a crazy.
It's a, I think we were pre-approved for the grant for the, am I right?
Yes. But of course, you know, funding for the federal government is always up in the air. You never know. But it's 30% of the total of the project.
Can I speak to motion?
Sure, you can speak to it.
So I, personally, I was involved in this a long time ago before I left and came back. This is a great idea. You're going to take 11,000 roughly, you're going to chip at that 11,000 energy bill. That's good. It doesn't affect municipal electric because Barry has enough headroom that, you know, he can enjoy some headroom in there and not have to affect our rate structure. That's good. We're not playing the net metering game. That's good. We just got to wait patiently for the government to give us money and even if they don't, you're still chipping away at it. That's good. So I'm supportive of this.
Linda? So even if the 52 doesn't, we have a less than five-year break even. In five years, the solar pays for himself. And I am fairly confident from what I've heard that the 52,000 will come through. So I would like to move to recommend this, the library solar Warren article. Second.
We have a motion by Brian, second by Paul. Any of you guys have any comments or are we ready to go? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's five to zero. Brian, no, we need another motion. Brian to warrant?
Yep, move it to the warrant.
Okay, Brian wants, and then Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask you a question? So let's use wordsmithing. Is this, will you still be able to wordsmith this later on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, we can change some of the wording.
Which one, Casey? This one?
This one, because you're raising and appropriating 173,000 and then it says you're raising and appropriating 52, which is not true. You know what I mean? So it's, the way it's written is improper, so I would want to edit it, but is that okay?
We don't have to uncheck the background.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to get approved by DRA anyway, so there's.
Well, it would get approved, but we'd be raising the?
The wrong amount.
The two of mine.
Yeah, thank you for that. So we don't have to uncheck anything, right?
No, no. What we approved is the 173,381 and how they explain it is what we're having changed. Everybody agreed?
Yep.
All right, let's go on.
So your next Warren article is Abenaki Skier Capital Reserve. Received feedback from Christine this afternoon. She'd like to increase this to 32,000 a year. And I added in at the request as of December 31, 2024. That may get adjusted once we receive the updated MS9, but the balance is 31,769 in the account. And again, I don't know if DRA will let that fly or not.
But thank you, Jim.
What do we currently have in the seat?
Okay, board members, what would you like to do with this one?
Move, will you approve it?
I second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dave and a second by Brad to?
Brian.
Brian, sorry. To recommend this Warren article. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. To the warrant, who's a good?
So moved, second.
Brad and Dave. Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 All right.
Okay, so your next article is police vehicle replacement to 125,274, utilizing 13,000 from the police department revolving fund for a total of 112,247. The current fund has 15,981.70.
Okay, this one was in our, that we basically supported it. We asked Jim to reword it and find out what was in the revolving fund. He's done that. Does anybody have any comments or discussion?
Didn't we also separately outside of this vote, didn't we set up a CRF, Jim?
There's another article in here for you to discuss if you so desire.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we recommend this.
Second.
And Brian, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to move it to the warrant.
Second.
I'll give it to Brian again to the warrant. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next one is whether or not you want to establish a capital reserve fund for police vehicles and ancillary vehicle equipment. See if the town will vote to raise, to vote and establish, vote to establish a police vehicle and ancillary vehicle equipment capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 315 for the purpose of replacing police vehicles and ancillary vehicle equipment and to raise and appropriate the sum of 63,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the board of selectmen and his agents to expend from this fund. Estimated tax rate impact for 2025, 2 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Again, just put this together for you to consider based on conversations which took place at the library on Monday.
I'm not in favor of establishing a capital reserve fund. We're really paying for three vehicles in cash. I think we're going to have a hard enough time getting the taxpayers to support the two. I want to stay focused on the two and not get sidetracked onto a capital reserve fund.
I'm going to agree with that, Linda.
Linda?
Yeah.
So the police department came to us with three originally, and I think they came to us with three as a minimum ask because then they came to us a second time and they asked for four. So that tells me if they came for three, they were being minimalistic, then they added it to four, it might be what they actually needed. We're giving them two. And yes, we are setting up a fund which is the cost of a third one, but that still meets what their first need was.
I heard them say they wanted two this year and they wanted two next year to deal with the four vehicles they bought in 2016. So I'd like to put two out this year and two out next year. And that's when I started looking at what we were kicking down the line and how much I, because I felt that that's what they asked for and I thought we kind of gave the nod to that. Paul?
So whether it's three or four, my, my head spins on that one because I was confused myself. So here's how I process my support for this is we're going to get a vote from the voter one way or another in the March timeframe. Immediately following that vote, they'll put an order on a company for the delivery of two cars. Sometime, if this thing is set up, now the risk is we do one of these, we get accused of an in-out thing. Sometime in 2025, circa, you know, later in the year, third, fourth quarter, fourth quarter, they'll put an order for another car for delivery in 2026. So I look at that as filling their need. My only concern, and if somebody has a concern about this, putting money in and taking it right out, that, you know, that kind of like the revolving thing, that could be a problem. But I support the idea of having a 63,000 capital reserve.
Linda, just one thing. It was three originally, then it was a lease for five.
Well, let's, let's, we've got somebody here. Then you and I arguing about what we heard, we'll let.
Captain, would you explain this?
Give us the answer.
Yeah, so the original lease that we were looking at was three. And then we worked with a program with the town manager and we were trying to figure out a program as you guys wanted moving forward and we were looking at five leases and then five leases again in five years. And then during our meeting on Monday with the select board, we decided to go with two purchase for this year, two purchase for next year, and that's the goal, to catch up on our fleet that we do have, that we've gone from 11 to nine vehicles in our fleet. So that's really a sum. So this scenario gives us two this year plus the money for one next year and then we can ask for just one from the voters next year. So we're getting four in two years, one way or the other. And it's a matter of do we think we're going to be in a financially better shape next year or not? I just heard you say, Linda, we're going to be in a tougher shape next year.
I counted it in as two and two when I looked at it. That's my thinking. That's how I planned it out. That's what I heard. You know, and a capital reserve account is really a savings account. This is just putting money, asking it for a year and not spending it, and then the next year totally emptying it out because I don't hear somebody saying you're going to fill it back up the following year, that you're going to, you're going to purchase one and then you're going to add another one to it. So that's where, that's where I am.
I'm hoping that eventually, if they do a capital reserve every year for 63, the officers have told us and the chief told us that they won't need one every year. There will be years where it will drop off.
No, I don't know where you heard that.
We will always need a cruiser every year, I can guarantee you that.
That was the plan.
Plus we've gone down to nine cruisers, so from 11, which we're kind of looking at that and seeing how that looks for our department. So the mileage may go up on each cruiser, knowing that we have less cruisers. So more likely we'll be asking for one a year as we try to catch up and analyze our fleet.
I completely appreciate the dilemma. We'll take delivery two next year under this scheme. That third one, you're hitting the order button, you're going to put a deposit down, but you don't take delivery of that until '26. The question is whether we're going to keep topping off that fund. I think we, I would. I'd keep doing it. If the challenge is that the police department needs three cruisers or four cruisers, then that's, that's the, you know, that's the, that tells me that we just have to figure out what the funding mechanism is and I think this is the right way to go about doing it. If the public says it's a bad idea, it's a bad idea, but I think this is the right funding mechanism to do it. And I'm not equivocating, but let me equivocate. If unless somebody says, you know, it's a felony using police, it's a bad idea to put money in and just take it out and kind of do the in-out stuff. Didn't we get reminded by somebody you couldn't do that?
That is not how you do, what they, it says you're to use a capital reserve. It says you're to use a capital reserve fund. Can we do it? We can do it. Then why don't we just put three and forget about the capital reserve account? That's what you're doing. You're asking the taxpayer...
No, not...
Yes, you are. And when we look at the bottom line, you're asking them to pay for three in 2026. That's the reality.
2025.
I mean, yes. I'm off the mic.
The other problem you can have is they could approve this, not approve it the next year. So I would rather leave it out and go for the whole car in one shot personally.
Or they could decide to do the capital reserve fund and not do the other two. I mean, those are all the options that people could do.
Then they'd at least have one car. Because last year, they didn't even get one. So I'd make a... I'll make a motion to recommend this warrant article.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, went down.
Hey, so it doesn't go. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Sorry, Captain.
So Linda, just a point of clarification. You voted to not recommend.
Yep.
Do you want to vote not move it to the warrant or to move it to the warrant?
That's correct. No, not to move it to the warrant.
Do you need a motion and a second on that?
Do you need a motion to not put it on the warrant?
Do we... If we don't recommend it, how can we put it on the warrant? I didn't...
Because it could read...
Not recommended.
Not recommended. 3-2.
Well, wait a second. Let me go back to the living parking lot. That didn't even get on the warrant because we didn't vote to recommend. Why would this one go on the warrant if the voter vote is not to recommend? That's why. You can't do it one way, one place, and one way the other.
I think it passed away on the bench. I think it's done.
Okay.
There's nothing to do by putting it on the warrant.
I don't think so either. It just gets confusing.
Yeah. I agree.
If they all have to be handled the same.
Thank you for that, Jim.
Okay. Next one.
So I'm not honestly sure where we are at with the Public Works Vehicle Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. There was a lot of discussion that took place at the last meeting. It got reopened. I believe it got revoted. And then there was conversations about changing the amount.
Yeah.
So I think you guys need to discuss this one. And I don't know if you want to discuss it now or at the end.
I'd like to move it to the end.
Okay.
That's where I've wanted it all along as we make the other decisions.
She wants to know how much cash she's got left to play.
Well, yes. Because I may change my vote on this one. I just have to...
Okay. So your next project is the River Street Water Main replacement. This is $350,000 with 150 from the Water Enterprise Fund for engineering, replacement of vintage water line services which service River Street and 200,000 from general taxation for the purpose of engineering, making repairs to existing sewer line in River Street, stormwater drainage system, and rebuilding of River Street. Two-year appropriation, 8 cents per thousand. This was updated language as you requested. And it mirrors what we did on Green Street for language.
Yep.
I'll make a motion. We move forward on this.
Okay. Dave made some motion to recommend. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I am Brad's second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So Linda, I have one question. Someone came to me and asked me, and I didn't know the answer to this. The Water Enterprise Fund or the Sewer Enterprise Fund can be funded with bonded warrant articles. But they told me that they were not sure whether or not we can use the general fund to fund infrastructure projects for water and sewer.
Been doing it for years.
That it should be from the ratepayers. Now, I'm not 100%... They could be way off and wrong.
But you need to read this. It says 150 is going to come from the Water Enterprise Fund.
Correct.
That's the water part. That's not out of the tax rate. That's from the water fund.
So the general fund and the amount of 200 paid by the water...
Because that is the repair to the road.
Build into the road, yeah.
And to the existing sewer line and sewer...
So they're separate and they're broken up.
Yep, right here.
Okay.
Yep, clearly.
All right. Just want to make sure that monies weren't mixed and...
We have done this before with general taxation. For instance, like the sewer line on Sewer Road, that was paid majority of it from taxes.
And that might be...
Not from...
Yeah, that might be something that we have to look at going forward because I was told that we are not supposed to use the general fund to fund any water or sewer infrastructure.
Nope.
Sewer, we do do capital projects for sewer.
Here comes Casey.
Hang on. Come to the mic, please. I was trying to get... That is correct, but we're not doing that. We're taking 150 out of the water fund. It's not coming out of general fund. So by breaking it out, you're raising and appropriating the total of 350, but you're saying 150 is coming from Water Enterprise Fund, which is the ratepayers, and 200 from taxation.
But if there was sewer attached, that sewer comes out of the general fund because capital projects in the sewer fund come out of the general fund.
Because the board made a decision to do that.
Correct. There's nothing that stops us from doing that.
Yeah. Well, that might be an issue that someone told me that we're not supposed to be doing that using...
I wish they would put that in writing to us and cite in RSA, please.
Right.
Okay. So we had... I need somebody to move this to the warrant.
So move, second.
Dave, Brad, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So your next article is the ambulance, same language. The only change is the reference toward 2026 and 2027 has been removed and it's put into a non-binding referendum warrant article that is after this.
Yes, you may.
Thanks for this, Jim, and thanks for rewriting it. My only question on this is I want to make sure that we are clear. Is that the total amount of money we're going to have to spend in 2025? Or is there any other money we need to spend in 2025, particularly on the capital side?
No.
That's it? We're done? That's good? Okay.
This is what the ad hoc committee came up with. It's been vetted. It's been vetted. And this is the number for 2025.
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion to recommend.
Move to recommend. Second. Brian, move. I second.
Brian, Paul, you guys are arguing tonight to get to be first. Okay. Any further discussion?
What about the differential?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. To the warrant.
Move to move it to the warrant.
Paul?
Second.
Brian? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. So your next article, ambulance service, non-binding referendum. This is new, so while we will read it. Are you in favor of the town of Wolfboro establishing a fire department-based 911 ambulance service to become effective January 1, 2027 as outlined below? The program will authorize funding through separate warrant articles in 2025 and 2026. All funds outlined will be above and beyond the current fire department budget and staffing as proposed in 2025. Expenses for the 2025 are $816,223 as outlined in warrant article 2025, which we haven't established yet. Expenses for 2026 are estimated at $1,402,905, which includes staffing costs as outlined in warrant in 2025 warrant article numbered to be determined. Funding to purchase a newly fully-equipped ambulance, hiring three additional employees, which includes wages, benefits, and required equipment. These actions will place the town of Wolfboro in position to provide fire department-based 911 ambulance services effective January 1, 2027. Expenses for 2027 are estimated at $1,105,559. These funds, combined with existing fire department budgets and staff, will provide the town of Wolfboro with three management employees, 18 full-time employees, and two fully operational ambulances. Further, effective January 1, 2027, the town of Wolfboro will no longer contract with a privately operated ambulance service, which is in the 2025 budget at $777,000.
Oops. Pickle switch.
Okay.
There you go.
My would... I would want that, this warrant article first, and then they ask for the ambulance a second. Other than that, I don't have any problem. Any other board members have any questions, concerns?
Whether it's in the warrant, Linda, whether it's in the warrant or not, I think that maybe during the briefing of the public phase, we need to kind of lay out clearly, here's the 2025 ask, here's the 2026 ask, that, you know, so they can see clearly what's coming at them. And then maybe something that says they could total all that up. This is the total. So people just understand what they're buying into. That's all.
That's... You're talking about the presentation. We're talking about a warrant.
Yeah. I was saying, whether we do it in here or whether we do it as a presentation, if you and the board say, let's just do it in the presentation side, I'm okay with that as long as we get it on the table. That's all.
Well, I guess I'm trying to find out how people feel about this and whether they want to put this on. You're giving me...
Too much advice.
Either way, is what you're telling me.
Correct.
Either here or another way. Other board members? Any comments?
Yeah, I'm good with moving this forward. I think obviously being a non-binding referendum.
Second.
It doesn't, you know, lock us into anything, whatever the vote comes out on that, other than it'll give us some guidance, I guess, or open our eyes maybe a little bit. But so that being said, I'd make a motion to recommend this warrant article.
Second.
Eight seconds.
Eight second. Any further discussion? My feeling here is I think it's very important for us to lay out the whole picture to the voter. And I think this referendum going first lays the picture out to them for each year's amount. And I think that is very important. Any other comments?
I would just add, Linda, we did seek guidance from legal regarding the possibility of putting all of the expenses for 2026 and 2027 into a singular warrant article similar to what we do with collective bargaining agreements. Statutorily, we cannot do that. There is a standalone provision for collective bargaining agreements, which allows for multiple-year appropriations to take place. So we can't physically do that as asked by somebody on this board. We did research it and it unfortunately can't be done.
Well, thanks for doing that. Okay. We have to recommend. Any further discussion? Yep.
But we... Excuse me. We can put this ahead of this other one.
Yes. Absolutely.
You okay with that? Yeah, that's where I wanted to... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now to warrant.
So moved. Second.
Okay. We got Brad and Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Okay.
Okay. So your next article is small sewer pump stations. Updated the language, evaluation and repairs of small sewer pump stations. I think that's what you were looking for. It's in here for $100,000, two-year appropriation. Estimated tax rate impact, 4 cents per thousand of assessed valuation.
Anybody, any comments? Can I have a motion to recommend?
Move to recommend.
Okay. Paul? Brian, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Who wants to move it to warrant?
Move to warrant.
All moved. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty.
Municipal reevaluation reflects $230,000 through taxation under RSA 758A, which says that we have to do this every five years.
Anybody have any comments or questions? This was, again, just language. Can I have a motion to recommend?
So move.
Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad? Any further discussion?
So Linda?
Mm-hmm.
So just so I'm clear. So I don't know if it's a policy or a practice of the board, but going into the unrestricted fund balance to fund something like this is something the board decided a year ago or so that we... Not this particular one, but the board would not use unrestricted funds to fund project. How did that work?
We may... When we had the issue with the pop whalen, which was, I think, if two years, we used to take some assigned unassigned fund balance and put it to a specific warrant. Before that, we always just take down the tax rate. After that issue, we, as a board, voted, said we would from then on use the unassigned fund balance to bring down the tax rate.
Okay. So we have... That's a... That was a...
That's...
That's the board decided that so that... Because my argument would be asking to take it out of unrestricted fund balance, no impact on taxes. But if that decision's been made, I'll abide by the decision and move it to general taxation.
And in reality, in November of next year, we can take 230 down and we've done the same thing.
If we accrue enough money, we'll be able to buy it down.
Yeah. And from what we have this year, we should have it easily.
Move to...
It's already... I gotta get a vote on it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. To the warrant. That's what you were saying, Paul?
Move to the warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? I have a motion by Paul, second by Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Here we move along.
Okay. So your next one is building maintenance capital reserve, $50,000. Current balance in that account of 110,996. As I've said, I think this is an area that you could take one year off.
Linda?
Yep.
So if I look at the... Again, this is as of the 7th of October, which may be outdated. But if I look at the building maintenance capital reserve, we have about 100... I see 104 in there roughly left. We spent 45... We spent 45, 70, yeah, 45,000 this year, 43,000. Is there anything staring us in the face, other than surprises? Or anything staring us in the face, Jim?
Nothing that I'm aware of. I mean, we've got a couple of minor items that we are going to be addressing. We are looking at replacing some flooring at the train station, the middle room and the chamber areas. We'll come in front of you and ask for that once we get the quotes. Short of that, you know, I don't see, I don't know of anything that's going to hit us immediately. We've got a new arena, we've got a new public safety building, we've got a fairly new town building. I think we could take a year off, in my opinion.
Board members, anybody want to make a motion to either recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion. We not recommend this?
Second.
Okay, Dave made the motion, Brian second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move to warrant. Okay, I'll make a motion to move it to warrant, so I can, Paul, second. Any further discussion?
We just voted it down.
Hearing that?
We just voted it down.
Oh, yep, not to recommend, sorry.
Remember that last one?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so your next article is tree removal replacement expendable trust fund, raise an appropriate 25,000, current have a balance of 54,386, one cent per thousand. This has been a very heavily used account since it's been established, removing trees, and I think this year we spent, we didn't cover 25,000, you guys authorized 25,000 out of this account to purchase trees. So those trees will be planted in the spring, but it's my understanding this 54,000 represents that 25 subtracted out. So I think you should continue with this.
I agree.
Make a motion, move forward with this article.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so I have Dave recommend, second by Brad. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
To the warrant?
Second.
So I'm making that motion, Paul?
So you did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so the next one, Libby Museum, I have reworded this article. This article now is asking for $350,000 of taxpayer money to be put toward the purpose of engineering and making stabilization repairs to the Libby Museum building and securing cost estimates for building renovations and repairs. This will give us the ability to stabilize a building, it'll give us the ability to get some estimates, so that next year at this time, we know what it's actually going to cost to fix the place, and it allows us to have the Schroff account and the other 300-plus thousand dollars for the purposes of moving the artifacts and or whatnot. So this this is a change, and it is reflected in your spreadsheet that you received this evening.
Does anybody have, want to make any comments?
Just to just to make sure we're clear, so in your professional opinion, y'all think that adding 350 to what we currently have in the bank gets the wall braced and gets the collection out of there. Those are the only two go-dos we have to go do, right? And and provides some liquidity, perhaps for the preservation folks to get some subsequent engineering on whatever option.
I think that these funds give us the ability to get a lot of that work done, so that the building stabilized, the artifacts are removed, and we can sit here next year at this time and know what it's going to cost to fix the museum to whatever level the board and the trustees decide is appropriate.
Anybody else have any comments, concerns?
I got one question, I think, for Jim. In the wording of this, would it be appropriate to add in and to allow the board of selectmen to accept any grants or whatever, however you wanted to word that? Would that need to be put in there if we had somebody come forward that was gonna, in case there's a group out there that wants to, you know, help with some of this, or?
So we usually do that when we know that we're creating an offset. We certainly could add it in here. We would still have to hold a public hearing.
If we didn't put it in, we wouldn't have to put public hearing, because this is not bonded, right?
Correct.
And you're saying if we put in the language to let, but we as a board have the ability already to accept grants and donations, so we're covered.
And we haven't applied for anything at this point. We know of nothing at this point, unless somebody knows something out there.
If we didn't put it in, we wouldn't have to put public hearing, because this is not bonded, right?
Correct.
And you're saying if we put in the language to let the ability already to accept grants and donations, so we're covered.
And we haven't applied for anything at this point. We know of nothing. Hold on, Alyssa, you are rebroadcasting across the ears. Could you please, thank you, mute?
That's a that's a drone.
Okay, Brad, yep, continue.
Just to continue, Jim, I think the point is getting at, if we if we didn't have the language in there, and another group came forward with, say, $100,000, that wouldn't go to offset the 350, that would probably be added to the 350.
Correct.
If we had the language in there, would that reduce the, you know, the impact on the tax rate if we had it in there to accept that within the 350?
I don't believe it would, and, you know, I, I mean, I think the engineering, the stabilizing, and securing costs for renovation and repairs, that's that's a pretty narrow scope for people to maybe want to donate to. That's that's the other.
Yep.
The voice of reason.
So you have to raise and appropriate the 350.
Right.
If you don't know what the offset is, you're still raising and appropriating 350.
Right.
If you don't happen to spend it because you get some donation, it just goes to fund balance, but.
True.
If you don't know the offset, you have to raise the total.
Thanks, Casey.
So is this for just engineering?
No.
It says the purpose of engineering to make stabilizing repairs to the museum building and to secure cost estimates for building renovations and repairs. So should it be engineering and making stabilizing repairs to museum building and securing cost estimates?
Understood.
See, I read the second part of the sentence, to actually do something, get engineering so you can do something. So I I read it differently, but if we need to tighten up the language, fine, tighten it up.
Yeah, I think we can tighten up the language, I think.
And will we be using the 288 that we currently have?
The 288, yes.
Plus Schroff.
Plus, if I looked at it, I thought, yes, with the Schroff fund, I think it's 362,000 we have in all.
About that.
I think we would use this 350 first.
Correct.
Yes, but the pool of money that we're having, once we put that in, has that other, so it's about 712,000.
Plus or minus 700.
Yeah.
So are we going to wait for new language, or are we going to go ahead and move it?
I think, well, it's up to you. I think the wording is there, I think we can just move.
Change one word from two to and.
I'll make a motion and move this forward.
Okay, that's, Dave, you're you're making a motion to recommend?
Yes.
And did I hear a second, Dave?
Second.
Okay, Paul, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move to warrant.
So moved.
Dave, second. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, so your next article, public safety building, soft cost, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of 175,000 for the purpose of final outfitting of the public safety building project and to authorize the use of that amount of December 31 restricted fund balance for this purpose. This amount represents interest earned on bond proceeds for the public safety building project. So when we secured the bonds, we created a restricted account for bond proceeds interest to collect into a standalone account. We are currently working through some of the final upfitting costs for the public safety building, which include a series of items, which, once complete, will be tagged to this, but right now it's looking like 175,000. The big one is the fence, and the other big one is the hoist within the hose tower. We were hoping to be able to use the one from the existing, or from the previous hose tower, but we aren't able to do that. So those are two large expenses that we'll see from this. There's no tax rate impact, it's just utilizing interest earned.
Does this use up all the interest?
I don't think it does.
No, so what will happen with the rest of the interest?
Right now, it's in a restricted account, and I think the board of selectmen, if they so choose, they could authorize that to be used to pay down the bond, or to go to the fund balance, one or the other.
Casey's giving you a yes, so people out there know Casey's giving you a yes.
Principle only.
Principle only, okay. And by the time we get to our taping, we will have those amounts?
Yep, we will, we will. I mean, with them just moving, getting ready in a couple of weeks to move into Phase 3, you know, we're getting a real tight handle on where we're at with this project. So right now, we're still in in pretty good condition. We're going to spend every cent that the voters approved, but we're we're holding the line very tight, which, and again, you know, if we didn't have that $300,000 hit of increase in steel from deliberative session to executing the vote, we would have, we would have been in really good position to finish this project under budget.
Linda?
Yep.
So just just for clarity, Jim, so this amount of money, is this, is, could you could you say these amount of dollars equal change orders?
No, these do not equal change orders.
I'm sorry?
These do not equal change orders. Change orders are part of the 1 million, or 13,140,000.
Okay.
These are items such as the fence to go around the building.
Okay.
The hose tower hoist, there's, I believe, kitchen equipment.
Okay.
That type of stuff.
Okay.
And there will be a complete spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I need a recommend, somebody to recommend?
Motion to recommend the warrant article.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brian, second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
To the warrant?
So moved, second.
Okay, got a motion by Brian, second by Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so your next one is to discontinue three capital reserve funds. We've got these funds that were used for a purpose, those purpose seems to have been completed. Parks and Rec, Foss Field Building, 371, Town Office Facility, 207, Wolfboro Public Library, 20, Build the Abenaki Four-Season Lodge, 2,600, and 93. Like to do away with these accounts, and the balance would go to the undesignated fund balance.
Moved.
Any discussion? Can I have a recommendation?
Move to recommend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brad, second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
To the warrant, who wants to make?
So moved.
Brian?
Second.
Brad, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And the next two are bonds. You'll have the bond hearing on these January 8. The first one is Mill Street Sewer Pump Station. This reflects the amount of money appropriated to do the project in 2024. I've got to get the warrant article to put in here, and it reflects state revolving loan fund. Again, this will be scheduled as a public hearing, if you guys are good with moving that forward to a public hearing on January 8.
Okay. You need a motion to move only to the warrant?
I'll make a motion to move this to the to the warrant, or move to a public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
To a public hearing?
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And the other one is the betterment assessment. Christopher Court, Jason Sway, based on the public hearing that you had last meeting, this places the language for the warrant article for you to bring forward to the bond hearing on, again, January 8.
So we need to move it to a public hearing?
Correct.
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse. I'm going to recuse or abstain, however you want to.
Okay, two of you have stepped down, so we'll be part of it.
Right, that's right, thank you.
Yep.
And I think you wanted to go back to the Public Works Vehicles Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund. So it's up there for you to discuss. I think Steve can answer questions more capably than I can on this.
You know, I can't change this, but we have a vote, and I spent some time today looking at what we, if we move everything to next year, what a bigger problem that we're in. And I realized that we can't keep on cutting the public works equipment, and so to me, it looks like next year is worse than this year. So if anybody wants to make a motion to reconsider the vote, I'm more than willing to reconsider.
I'd like to move to reconsider the the vote.
I have a question first.
Yes.
So my question was, we voted originally for 380,000.
Mm-hmm.
At the last meeting, there was a vote to revisit, but not a vote to reconsider. We would have needed a vote to reconsider in order to have this be revisited for another vote. So as it stands now, it is legally, the first vote that we had for 380,000 is where it is now. Now, if we want to vote to change it to 200,000, we need a vote to reconsider, right?
I will then, then I'll ask for that motion.
Put a motion to do that. Let's move to reconsider the 380,000 number.
So I have a motion by Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dave. I'm one of those no votes. I'm willing to move to the 380, and I'm doing that because we, I don't believe we can cut two years in a row, and I think next year may be a year where it makes more sense to cut back on this than this year. Leaves you, Paul, hanging out there.
I'm I'm comfortable, I ran some numbers a couple of weeks ago, looking at his tenure, what he thinks is his cost, how much we have in the bank, in the capital reserve, and I'm at 280.
Okay.
And I think, I actually agree with Linda, we are potentially snowplowing a, isn't that good, a little highway thing? We're snowplowing some big numbers into next year. I'm comfortable with what I saw in the list you have at 280,000, unless somebody tells me that's a dumb idea.
Did I get the vote on the reconsider?
No.
No, I didn't think so. Okay, all those in favor of the reconsider?
Aye.
Okay.
You know, you know what else we didn't get, but we'll come to it later? We still got to figure out that 2,600 bucks for the Libby to get the collection, that's next.
That's other business.
That's other business, all right.
Make sure we don't.
I'm at 280 grand for the highway guys, that's it.
Is this an auction?
Well, it's what it sounds like.
It's an auction. Linda's at 380.
I would go to 380, where the other ones, I could also go to 280. I'm concerned about what's going, what we've got for next year. And you did some kind of calculation to come up with this number. It has nothing to do with the. It has nothing to do with the layout of assets that Steve gave. That's why I went to 380, because it seemed like he laid out a good system of moving the, and replacing vehicles. I don't know what he'll do for 280. It wasn't one of the options he gave us.
I did the same, I did the same numbers last time, and I said 280 at the last meeting.
There you go.
So 280 is, is, I think it gave him the ability to buy a truck or two trucks next year, what he really needed, and it would put his fund very, very low, where he wanted to keep a balance in it. But I'm okay with 280. It's a, it's a mid-ground. It's a compromise, isn't it? That's a great thing.
Linda's, Linda's saying, you know, we got to, we got to be careful that we don't find ourselves in deep doo-doo.
That's what I'm concerned, I.
Did you make a motion there so we can vote on it?
He did, he did.
Oh.
And I seconded it.
No, there's no motion there.
And I made the motion that we, we recommend 280,000 to the warrant, and I second that.
Just now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just now.
Just now, I want to make sure.
Thank you, Dave.
That's for, that's for 280,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still at the 380. I agree.
Me too.
I was on that before, and to Linda's point, you know, the assets that Public Works has to keep track of, to schedule out for replacement, to anticipate the wearouts and what it's going to cost us, you know, the maintenance starts costing more than what it's worth to fix. If we start kicking this one down the road, too, as Linda said, too, it's, it's, it's going to come back and get us later on, so. I'm still at the 380. I would prefer to be there so that we're funding this, this plan here to keep these, you know, these are the tools that the guys work with. It's what they need out those roads every day, during every storm, whenever there's an emergency that comes in, some, some, you know, our emergency response people do, they need to get out there, so, and they need the equipment, so I'd prefer to stay at 380.
Yeah, I, you know, it's not just the problem we're going to have in 2026, it's going to fall over into 2027. And, you know, I was the one who was saying, uh-uh, I don't want to do that, you know, I now have a price tag on the Libby. My calculation, if we do this, we're at 3.5. That's what we're going to be out there asking the voters for. You take, you know, and you just keep on moving it down the road. I can, I, I, I will stay with 380 at this point. Nobody's convinced me, you know. I think we asked them to take their vehicles and plan them out, and he planned them out, and he's also collecting, if the, if the capital reserve works, you've got to keep on collecting money as we go down, and that at some point, if you have to do a greater, you better have a good hunk of money in there. And that's what you're playing with, you're calculating and, and a number, so that's where I am. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I've got two for, those against? Okay, it's two to three. So that, so that fails. Now, do I have a motion to, to recommend?
I'll make a motion, we recommend the 380.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, oh.
I'll let Brian second.
You said the first time.
Okay. This is for 380. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we did.
So we ended up right where we were the first time?
No?
No.
No, we're not.
No, we didn't.
No, you guys wanted to talk, that's what happened.
Okay.
But we ended up with a five to zero vote instead of three to two.
That's what we wanted, right?
Brad wanted a, I think you wanted a continued vote.
Brad, did I hear you say you wanted to move it to warrant?
Yes, you did.
Okay, and I thought I heard Dave second?
Yes.
Okay, to move to warrant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 380, you got it. That's because I don't, I can't take, uh, next year, don't think I'm going to be.
Yeah, you only, you only get the benevolent once.
I only gave you one year on this. I'm concerned about the next year. You got it this year.
Next year, it's cranky.
Yep.
I like, I like the idea of buy, buy time.
Yep, okay, I think we've done it.
That, that takes care of your warrant articles. I'll just remind you, two bond hearings. And two collective bargaining agreements that we're still in negotiations with.
Okay, we need to decide that the warrant article taping, and the date being suggested is January 15th. And we don't have a time, so I don't know where people, how January, is everybody free the 15th? That's Wednesday. Looks like we're going to try to do it before our Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Hang on. January 15th?
We have a Selectmen's meeting that, because we had one the week before.
I haven't, we haven't.
Yeah, we have one the 8th.
We were on the 8th.
Because we don't have it on New Year's.
I would think we have one on the 8th. We're going to have our next one the 22nd.
Okay, because we, we were in schedule.
Yeah, we don't have one, January 1st is a Wednesday, so that kind of screws the weeks up on us a little bit.
Okay, so then we're going to have one on the 8th and one on the 22nd of that month.
Correct.
So the 15th is still the proposed date?
Yep.
We're assuming that Timothy's okay with the 15th.
You okay with the 15th, Timothy?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wing Wednesday, always.
Wing Wednesday. What time? Paul bringing pizza, or?
No, he's bringing the wings.
Four o'clock, then I can make it to seven wings.
I like to do it in the afternoon, we usually do it always. We usually do it in the afternoon. I mean, the last couple of years, it's taken us about an hour and a half.
Yeah.
To run through them. I don't think that's going to be any different this year. So, you know, I don't know if you want to shoot for two o'clock, maybe?
Sure.
Yep.
And that's going to be up at your house, or here?
Right here.
Here.
Yeah, we've done it here for the last.
Two o'clock, Jim, did you say?
If that works for you guys, we will make it work.
Oh, that's warrant here.
Got it.
Okay.
Yes.
Now we're on to November's actual versus budget. We have our finance, finance director here.
Mic's off.
I'm just going to turn it up. Try that.
Sounds like it went back on.
Is the battery on?
I hear that was all you got to use, Lynn. Definitely have to get.
Mm-hmm. I think Captain Libby did that the other night at the police commission meeting.
Thank you. Now I'm glad I made that comment tonight.
Okay, so as of the end of November, we are 11 months through the year, or approximately General fund operating budget, we are 97% spent. The revenues are coming in at 108%. The water fund, 98% spent, with 89% of our revenues collected. The municipal electric fund is 91% spent, with 84% of the revenue received. Sewer fund is at 97% spent, with 90, excuse me, 89% of the revenue received. And the Pop Whalen Fund is currently at 104% spent, with the revenues sitting at 78% received. Since my last report, the town has received a FEMA reimbursement from July 2023 storms, totaling $881,940. We've also booked the second half of the property taxes in November, which are reflected in these revenue percentages. And today, as of yesterday, we have collected roughly 83% of our second half tax warrant, which is on par for where we expect to be. Also included in your packet is the donation reconciliation, the capital reserve fund planning document, the gas and diesel allocation costs, and also included are our investment policy and fund balance policies for you to review, and we will be revisiting those on the December 30th meeting.
Good. We would like to have you re-vote if possible.
I'm sorry?
We'd like them to re-vote on re-authorize those, correct?
Yes, yes. It's something that's done annually. There was a minor change made to the investment, based on the recommendation of the treasurer. But other than that, they have not changed.
Okay, so we can read these, ask you any questions if we have it in the vote, will be on December 30th.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, any questions?
Just a comment. So we, we now have one enterprise fund that's, that was supposed to be break even, is now 100, is 4% over its budget and 22% underneath. That has been a question, I think, at least, I think we've all asked as we go along. On a go-forward basis, may I please ask that if we think financially we see a problem, can we identify it early enough so that we can make the appropriate management actions, or Jim can make the appropriate management actions to curtail that? Curtail an overage in expenses, okay? Just, I just asked that, because we've been, I've been asking since I came aboard, is this thing going to make the number? And the answer is, that's the plan. Well, it didn't happen. So we have, we, I understand we have a, we had a change of personnel, got that part, that created an operational issue, but there's also a financial side of this that says we should be looking at that, too. So I'd like to make sure on a go-forward basis that we, we look out and find out whether we think we're going to be in, in an issue, okay? But other than that, Sim, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Yeah, you're welcome. I think there's a number of us keeping a close eye on Pop Whalen, so.
Yeah, good, that'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next item?
Is Jim.
On the agenda is Josiah Brown. Jim, are you going to take this one?
So in front of you, you have a memo regarding the Josiah Brown Scholarship Fund. We currently have two applicants for the fund. At this point, the fund has $69,841.90 in it. Previously, we've issued $1,500 per student. The board, at this point, based on the amount of money in there, the thoughts of the, for you to take under consideration is the possibility of issuing $6,000 per student. This is one of those challenging scholarships. I think we did go through and, and update the limits for it, but it's just one of those scholarships we're having a hard time attracting people for.
Wow. Well, you wonder whether, you know, I, what we don't know is how many applied that didn't, you know, get the criteria, or whether we should change the criteria some more. We have 96, you know, we take out, you know, we're going to get another 30 in, in the spring is when we are. I think we really need to see how we can get some more of this to students, and we may, I don't know exactly how we do it, but we may need to really take a look at the criteria again.
Yeah, and I think it's challenging. I don't recall, but it, I think there was fairly limiting factors based on the trust, too, which, I mean, we can change the, the amounts and income limits, but.
You're saying qualification issues, Jim?
I, I can't remember, Paul.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I've got to do.
The good news is we have two applicants here.
I, I think we should pull out the trust and see what we can do.
Yeah, so revisit it.
Brad?
Would, is there a way to find out from the guidance department at the school if there were other applicants that just didn't qualify, so at least we know if they're, if there's interest in the scholarship?
So it is my understanding that it is circulated at the school, and it is my understanding we only have two applicants.
Really? Wow. Interesting. Dave, how's it?
Dave?
I'll make a motion that we grant $6,000 scholarships to the two individuals that we have here, Marion Lambert and Emma Scott.
Second.
Until, and as part of that, that we revisit what we had just discussed in reference to the qualifications and so forth.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dave, second by Brian, for 6,000 per applicant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business?
So under, under business, you know, at the last meeting, the trust, Libby trustees met, and when we came out of Libby trustees, it was supposed to be a conversation about whether or not to spend $2,200 out of the Schroff or the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund for the Libby Museum to update the Valerie Kinkade estimate for relocating and storage of the artifacts. I need to know if that's something the board wants to consider going forward, or do I tell Ms. Kinkade that we're not going to?
Brad?
Yeah, my opinion would be that, that we do move forward with that. They have all the, most of the details already, so to bring somebody new in to get a call, because we need to know what that number is anyway, whether it's from Kinkade or some, somebody else, and the amount of work they've already done on it, I think that the 2,200 is going to be, be a bargain compared to what you would find out elsewhere, so I would recommend that, or my opinion is to move forward with withdrawing the, the funds out and having them provide that updated cost estimate.
And from the Schroff Fund, am I correct that that's where we're taking?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Paul?
Yeah, just, just for clarity, so the, this 2,200 is to update the pricing, to have the collection removed, and to store it, or find a storage place. I, I guess my, my question is just, let's make sure that we're clear on what the task ahead is for this. It is to, at the, at the appropriate time, to take the collection out, store it, with some understanding that that storage is going to be for, I'm going to make it up unless somebody has a, a different theory, a year. So I'm, I'm keen on saying, let's, let's go ahead on, with the 2,200 bucks, because I think Brad's right, going to find somebody else is probably a crazy, well, I shouldn't say crazy, it's just a different idea. But I want clarity on what the bill of materials is. Thanks.
Linda?
Yep.
So my questions would be, when are we going to take the stuff out?
Well, we first have to get the Turner Report, so we know about the building, and we probably will need to find out a cost to shore it up in order to get the collection out. And so I think we all know those things have to come first. This is just to give us a price tag for taking the collection out. us a price tag for taking the collection out, is my understanding, if I'm right.
So we have a warrant article in March that could pass or could fail. We aren't sure when we're going to move anything out of the building yet because we haven't got the Turner Report. And we don't know if we're... How long it will take to shore up the building. So my question is, if we take and do this now for $2,200, are we going to have to do it again in 10 months?
We need to have her give us a time on how long it's good for. You're right.
Yeah, and...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's good for... That was my thing. It is good for, question mark, how long?
Yep.
Or will she put an escalation based on six months or a year into her quote so that we know where we'll be?
Sure. I think that's part of what we're getting. I think that's kind of where Paul is, and you're even clearer. And I agree with you. We need to have that to spend the 2,200. Does that make sense to you, Brad?
Yes, absolutely.
Dave? So if we vote this in, we're looking for... Or do we... I think, yes, we have to vote it in in order for her to give us anything.
The only other question I have is, could we reach out to her first and say, listen, if we need this updated, how long would it take you? If it's only a short lift, and she says, eh, a couple of weeks, we don't really need to do it now. We can wait for that. If she says, oh, yes, it's a six-month project, then it's something that we need to do now.
Well, my point on that would be, sure.
Sure.
We're talking 2,500 bucks, or 22, whatever the number is. It's a de minimis amount of money. We should give Jim the okay to go ahead with that. And I'm sure in that conversation, he's going to ask, when can you start? How long is it going to take? But I'd much rather, you know, enable him to... So I'm going to make a... Was there a motion on the table already? There is.
Yeah.
I'm going to call the question.
Okay, so I had Dave made the motion. Who... Did you?
I seconded.
Brad seconded?
Oh, no, Brian did.
Brian seconded it?
One of us.
All right. I'm going to call Brad because he had questions. You didn't second it, did you? Did you second it? No, I didn't think so. Okay, so the motion is to approve $2,200 for an update of the estimate to take the collection out of the Libby.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we took care of that. Anything else under other business? Jim, you're up next.
Oh. What am I supposed to say?
Yeah, we've been busy with getting the budget through the Budget Committee finalized, warrant articles, and collective bargaining agreement negotiations.
Okay, I'll start down with Dave. Reports?
All right, we all had a good time at the Christmas party, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it was nice.
I had a Conservation Commission meeting, and we've had union negotiations. And I couldn't believe it was six hours the other day between the two unions. We had fun, didn't we, Paul?
It was hilarious.
That's all I got.
Brad?
Let's see. We had a... It was last week we had Wolfboro Waters meeting. We've had a couple of... We all got together for a couple of meetings to go over warrant articles as a group here. I attended the Budget Committee meeting Monday night. We had a Planning Ward meeting last night. Had Wolfboro Community TV meeting this morning. And as Dave mentioned, we had the Christmas party last Friday night, which was excellent, so...
Okay, Paul?
I also attended the Christmas party, holiday party, whatever the right words are, Christmas party. I thought it was outstanding with the amount of people who came. I, too, along with Dave, had been involved in labor discussions. And although I was just a little snickety about it, it was six hours. But, you know, we're at the point, and hopefully in a well-mannered way, we're grinding it out, which is good. I mean, we're grinding at it. I've attended Police Commission meeting. I did meet with the Libby trustee, Tom Goodwin. I want to thank Amy for being able to find a soft copy of the actual inventory of the Libby in total. I passed that to Tom and encouraged Tom to get with Maggie and kind of get lined up because, you know, one of the things that's going to be important, not only getting the assets out of there, but understanding who they belong to and going from there. That's all I have.
Right. So we had a couple of Budget Committee meetings, and interesting as always, in shaving the budget down by, well, whittling it, I would say. Maybe not shaving, but whittling it, little pieces at a time, getting it as small as we can. My Heritage meeting was canceled for weather. My EDC was canceled for scheduling. Linda and I went to the Christmas senior lunch.
We did.
And it was fantastic.
It was.
All decorated nice.
Yep, it was.
Linda was serving.
Yep.
Big smile on her face.
And Brian was running around.
I take and I go around with the cart and I serve the drinks. And they had a Yankee swap.
They did?
Gave away centerpieces and a great presentation by Linda's... I'll let her finish that.
Let you explain it.
I'll go on with my report. Okay. I had a Historical Society meeting. I had a Friends of Pop Whalen meeting. I was with Brad at Wolfboro Waters. I had a Library Trustees meeting. I counted three Budget Committee meetings, and we get to have another one tomorrow.
Yay.
I went to and gave a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Meeting. And I had a Wolfboro Waters Assessment Subcommittee meeting. I also went to the Christmas party. But what I really would like to talk about, and we've had two meetings, is last night Wolfboro. We are ready to go. We have all our sponsors, all our events. And on the town website, if you go to the town homepage, the first link is to last night. You hit that link, and there'll be another link that'll take you into the schedule. And you can see all the events that will take place that day. So when we went to the senior meals, we brought that flyer, and a lot of them took it and were glad. And we had slides showing on what was happening at Wolfboro Waters, I mean, at last night Wolfboro from other years. And Brenda Juret, our PR person, did an outstanding job. That's all I have. Questions from the press?
Alyssa has left us.
Any public input? I think we've worn everybody out.
I've seen nobody coming up online.
Okay, I'll take a motion to go into non-public.
So move...
Second.
Third.
Okay, I'll give it to Brad. He's closer to me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay.